Can you hear me? Can you see me? Oh, okay, I got you. Well, looks good on my end. Go ahead and hang up. Thank you.
All right, now can you hear us?
Can you hear us, Larry?
Yes, can you hear me? I hear you guys fine.
We can hear you great. We're connected. Are we recording now? Boy, boy, you got this thing down. I'm telling you. Great. Great. Well, thank you for everybody here, and let's start out with the invocation.
Let's pray. Father, it's the first Monday of the month again, so we're here to do the work of the people of Mariester. We thank you for this time. We thank you that we're not here by accident, but everyone here has been appointed and placed by you to do this work. No matter how many phone calls are taken, or text messages, or emails are responded to, the council here can't know the hearts and minds of the people of Mariester as well as you do. So, we just look to your guidance, to the wisdom of the way that you know and love the people of Mariester. We rely on that as we make decisions tonight. So, we thank you guys, you've blessed our time here tonight, and we love you in Jesus's name.
Thank you. Okay, I'm calling to order the regular meeting of the City of Mariester City Council, August 4th, 2025, at 6:00 PM. Would everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Now I'd like the city clerk to do a roll call of the council.
Councilmember Sutton.
Here.
Councilmember Coxwell.
Here.
Councilmember Lawson.
Here.
Mayor Proton Oder.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. And I have Councilman Carter on remote, and I'd like to have a motion, if I could, to allow him to participate in tonight's meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I have a first.
I'll second.
And I have a second. Would everybody please vote? Okay, it's unanimous, or semi-unanimous. Okay, Larry, you're on. You're good with it. You can still hear us, okay. Number five is approval of tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Okay, I have a first.
A second.
And I have a second. Would everybody please vote? Larry, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. And we're unanimous on that. I have number six, a special presentations. The first one is Yard of the Month.
And Mayor and Council, just to inform you all, one of these was a city submission. It was the 186 Brewer Circle, but everyone has been asked if they wanted to participate, and I've said yes, so.
Okay, so everybody's good, if want to put the sign up. Okay, does any council people have a preference on any one of the five houses? Or four, four houses?
I liked 186.
186, okay.
I also like 186.
186, okay.
186 as well.
All right, let's see, 186. Put up on the screen. 186 Brewer Circle. That is nice. Let me ask you a question on that. Okay, Brewer Circle, that's not the one. There's one with a bicycle in front. This ain't the one, right? We've given it to them before. No, I mean, it's a bicycle that's got flowerpots. It's really nice. I just, it looks familiar. Okay. 186 Brewer Circle. Does everybody like it? You want to go with it? Do they have a motion to go with that?
I'll make the motion for 186.
Okay, I have a first. Is that a second, Mr. Oder? Okay, so let's go ahead and vote for 186 Brewer Circle to be Yard of the Month for the month of August. Mr. Carter, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Do we need to say that it was city or person, or can we just?
We don't have to, but I'm saying it so if there's ever any question.
That's what public records is for. I just think at the meeting, it just sounds kind of pointed.
The only thing we brought up is sometimes you guys prefer to have a citizen recommend a house over like me or you doing it. And that's your call. I mean, it doesn't matter to me. It's a house. It looks great. It's Yard of the Month for August, so. But that's the only thing we bring that out.
I'm just trying to be transparent.
I understand.
Transparent, okay. A lawyer would like that, like that. Transparency, right? Mr. Hayward, you okay on that? You doing text messages on company time here with what's going on?
I think it's totally up to the council, so I was just texting an address.
Okay, okay, yeah, yeah. Gotcha, gotcha. To your law firm, right. They need to have, yeah, okay. We're not buying it. But anyway, okay.
It's of the month.
All right, well, thank you. I'll take care of the sign. I'll pull it out of Anderson and move it over this week before we go on our down south. Okay, 6.2 is a letter, thank you for Jacobs for what they did with the with the water break. Mr. Carter recommended it, and we all voted on to do it. I didn't, but everybody else did. So I'm going to read it for just one, and then I'm going to give it a presentation to each one of you. It's a City of Mariester thank you letter for the people that are here that participated. There's a total of four, five, six, seven, nine people on the list, and here's the letter. It says, "Whereas it is the duty of this organization to recognize and commend acts of extraordinary commitment, responsibility, and presence of mind that safeguard both our personnel and the integrity of our operations. And whereas in June 17, 2025, during a routine operation, an unexpected and potentially hazardous line break was identified, presenting a clear and immediate threat to safety, equipment, and ongoing productivity. And whereas Josh Robinson actions not only, okay, whereas this person, actions not only averted a possible disaster preventing damage and potential injury, but also initiated and contributed to the timely repair of the line. And whereas such conduct exemplifies the highest standards of vigilance, professionalism, and duty to the team and mission of this organization. And whereas his dedication and zeal in the work of this and other civic organizations have won Mr. Blank the respect and affection of his fellow workers. Therefore, I, Chris Stein, Mayor, City Mayor of Mariester, Florida, on behalf of our citizens, am pleased to tender this thank you letter to him with our sincere thanks for his dedicated service to the welfare of our community." Okeydoke. Would all four of you please come up?
Mayor Stein, they were also very hardworking Friday night, too, in the McDonald's parking lot when a water line broke. So, yes, they were out late and and I know I saw Josh and Max. They were both covered in dirt and yes, thank you guys for all the hard work.
Did great. Thank you. Okay, moving on, the consent agenda. Does anybody wish to make any modifications to the consent agenda at this time? If not, do I have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
I'll make that motion.
I have a first?
I'll second.
I have a second. Everybody please vote. Mr. Carter, how do you vote on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Thank you. And we're unanimous on that. Citizens who have requested to be placed on the agenda for tonight, I have none. Public comment, non-agenda items. Does anybody out there wish to make a three-minute speech about anything? Okay, all right. Unfinished business, we have none. New business is 11.1, consideration of Joint Powers Agreement, JPA, with FDOT to landscape Mariester Boulevard. And Sean, you gonna go with this one?
Yes, sir. I'm Sean Lindsay, Director of Public Works. In your packet, you'll see a lot of different things, including the JPA agreement. Mr. Hayward has looked this over. He may have some comments. This is the agreement for doing the landscaping on Mariester Boulevard. Originally, I told you there's a 50-50 match, and there is a program for a 50-50 match, but this is 100% funding. We just maintain it after it is installed. We don't have to maintain it for the first year after it's installed. That's also in the contract. But after that, we'd have to maintain it forever. Right now, the plans are at 90%. I put those in your packet as well. Those will get comments by FDOT, and then there will be 100% plans will be developed after those comments have been addressed. And then it'll be ready to go out for bid.
Okay.
So there is no financial impact other than maintenance into the future. Staff moves approval of the Joint Powers Agreement by resolution, which is required by the contract.
Okay. Any questions?
The only one I have is after the first year, again, ballpark. What do we estimate the maintenance of it will be?
So the maintenance will be in a couple of different parts. You'll have maintenance of a new irrigation system. The irrigation system is all in pieces right now from the recent project. And so all that will have to be maintained. You'll have to maintain all the mowing and weed eating, and then trimming the bushes and hedges, and probably, probably need to put everything on a fertilization schedule. The first 18 inches of dirt will be modified that will help with that. But there'll be a lot of that going on.
Costs 50K, 20K?
I don't have a number for you.
Okay, I would just, yeah, because after the first year, I thought, okay.
Most of it's staff time.
Heather's not here, but, you know, okay, we need to, two years from now, start looking at, okay, what do we need to allot for this? We're taking this on, so that's all.
It's going to be integrated with our normal mow and
I understand, but still.
Yeah, it's additional work. No, you're right. You're right.
So, same with the sprinklers. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
One point of clarification, too. We're already actually responsible for maintaining this. So it's not, really, that's one of the things that we're looking at, and DOT will give us some comments back as well, because they do this. You know, they approve these plans all across the state. But, I mean, one of the goals is, yeah, we want it beautified, but it needs to be relatively easy to maintain. So you may have more expenses for things like fertilizer, but as far as staff time, we want to try to keep that to a minimum.
That's all I have.
Anybody else want to speak, say anything? Okay.
I'll agree.
On this resolution, I'm going to ask the city clerk to read the first paragraph.
Resolution number 25-09, a resolution of the City of Mariester, Florida, approving the joint participation agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation Financial Project 456906-1-58-01 in a not-to-exceed amount of $600,000 and zero cents.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the Joint Powers Agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation and proceed to bidding the project and approve Resolution 25-09?
I'll make that.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
You got a first? Want a second, Richard? Okay, we got a second. And you have more discussion on it? Mr. Carter, do you have anything to say?
No, sir. I vote yes.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote then. Oh, I'm sorry. Are we ready? Okay. Mr. Carter, how do you vote? You vote yes, right?
Yes.
Okay, great. We're unanimous. This is a two-parter. 11.2, okay, I'm sorry, 11.2 is going to be consideration of FDEP agreement number November whiskey 007 for Highway 98 water main replacements and upgrades.
Hi, Mayor. I'm Sean Lindsay, Director of Public Works and Council. The water line on 98 requires replacement. Public Works applied for grants to replace the water line. The City of Mariester was awarded 3.5 million, which is half of the initial request. Jacobs looked at that. They decided which half was the worst half that we could do. The project replaced the water lines south of 98 from Andalusia Drive to Western City Limits. This section has several issues with aging lines. This will require easements to relocate the new city water lines out of the state right of ways so it will not impact State Route 98. Replacing water mains, the fire hydrants, valves are also replaced, making it easier to isolate the lines during breaks. The estimate indicates that this project is expected to be 3.7 million, requiring $200,000 contribution of the city utilities fund. And staff recommends to approve the DEP agreement number NW007, Highway 98 water main replacement and upgrades.
Okay, discussion. Any questions for Sean? Mr. Carter, any questions?
None at this time. It comes time to put a project to start. I'll have questions then.
Okay. What do you say? Later. Okay, we're going to vote. That's the reason I was asking. Okay. All right, well, ask the city clerk to read the resolution first paragraph.
Resolution number 25-10, a resolution of the City of Mariester, Florida, approving the grant agreement with the State of Florida Department of Environmental Protection for Highway 98 water main replacements and upgrades, agreement number NW007, in the amount of $3,500,000 and zero cents.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve a DEP agreement number NW007, Highway 98 water main replacements and upgrades, and approve Resolution 2025-1?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Oder, you got a first? And we have a second, Mr. Rich. My Rich. Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Mr. Carter, how do you vote on it?
Yes.
Thank you. And we're unanimous on that. Okay, 11.3 is consideration of emergency management contracts, including updated rate schedules. City manager on that one?
Yes, Mayor and Council, as you know, sorry about that, as you know, every year, we bring forward these renewals for these three contracts. The original contract was awarded back in 2021. And so every year, staff asks the contractor if they would like to renew, and if so, is there any change to the rate schedule? DRC, which handles our debris removal, stated that they intend to renew, and there's no change to the rate schedule. The same thing with DSI, which handles our disaster recovery, so helps us essentially with all the accounting after a storm. The same with them, no increase in their rate schedule. The only change was Tetra Tech, who handles the debris monitoring. So essentially, just for the folks in the audience, they're the ones that make sure that the debris removal contractor does everything per FEMA guidelines, which sounds very straightforward and simple, but there's a lot to it. They have asked for a 2.28% increase, which is strictly based on CPI. And so staff is recommending approval of the motion to approve the one-year contract renewal and rate schedule with Tetra Tech. The final thing to this is probably in the spring, we will go out for proposals again for these same services because this is the last year. This is year five.
Okay. Any questions, discussion? Mr. Carter, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay, then 11.3, do I have a motion to approve a one-year contract renewal and rate schedule with Tetra Tech?
I'll make that motion.
You have a first? Sutton?
I'll second.
I have a second. Okay, let's go ahead and vote, please. Mr. Carter, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. We're unanimous on that. Okay, 11.4 is consideration of agreement with Live Oak Fiber for internet services at designated city facilities.
Yes, sir. So on, we were Yes, sir. So on, we were looking at the new city hall at getting Internet service run to it. So we went ahead and got three quotes. We got quotes from Live Oak, AT&amp;T, as well as Cox. And you've got, you've got an Excel spreadsheet that shows the different rates. We are recommending going with Live Oak Fiber for the cost, and also because they can provide really one of the highest speeds to that facility. We would also plan on doing the same thing for this campus here. So this current, the existing city hall, as well as the library and the Public Works building. So even once, even if this building is vacated, they will still need service to the library and to Public Works. And so the way that we're set up is that we all share the same connection. We have underground conduit that runs from building to building. So we will still need two separate connections. But based on cost, as well as the speed, we are recommending to go with Live Oak.
What do we currently have here?
We currently have Cox in this building, and the same thing at the library. The one thing that I will note is, on the recommendation, it is to authorize the city manager to execute the documents. The reason for that is because we're not necessarily going to start these contracts tomorrow. So the new city hall, we don't want to pay for two, three months of service, obviously. They also have to run a line to the new city hall. And they'll have to do the same thing for this building. And so it's gonna take a few months. But we did want to make sure we got this contract to use, so that we can at least get started on the work.
Okay. Any discussion? Questions? Mr. Carter, you have any questions?
No, sir. I read the packet like the hand wrings on the wall for Cox.
Yeah, okay. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agreement with Live Oak Fiber for Internet Services at the existing city hall, Public Works Library Complex, and the new city hall facility, and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents? Okay, I have a first?
I'll second.
And I have a second. Let's go ahead and vote, please. Mr. Carter, how do you vote?
I'm voting yes, but that's for a one-year, correct?
One year, well, I don't know.
No, so it's actually for a three-year.
Three years.
Historically, city halls had a five-year contract. Five years is a long time, so we, what we basically did was try to get them all to provide us with the lower price at the three-year term.
Gotcha.
Gotcha. Okay. And you, how do you miss the vote, Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Okay, great. We're unanimous on that. Okay. Item 12 is council standing committee reports and other comments. We'll start at my left. Ms. Sutton?
Yeah, so last week was quite the busy week. I did attend the United Way Annual Dinner. They have raised over $2 million in our area and helped. They've also had a record number of volunteer hours for their group, at, I think it was 17,000 hours last year alone in volunteer. So that's remarkable. And then one of our very longstanding public affairs lady that has always helped with the military retired after 34 years. And so I got to win her a very good send-off from our city, so it was very nice to see her and everyone out there. But, and then just upcoming conferences and meeting with the base over some traffic issues later this week. So, yeah, lots going on.
I don't have anything that I've done. I just wondered, what are we doing with the Veterans Day Parade, since it's on a Tuesday this year? Do we have any?
We're still planning on the 11th. I mean, yeah, that the, yeah, it's gonna be a discussion item. We had our first meeting. That was not brought up. We were assuming the 11th on Tuesday. We might, I don't know, look into moving it? What would you do?
That would be my.
The military gets off Friday through Monday, I'm assuming, for, you know, the four-day weekend.
School's only out Tuesday. I mean, they go to school Monday.
Yeah, and Tuesday, I don't know. How do you feel, Jared? I mean, Tuesday?
I don't really have a feeling either way. From my understanding is, we've pretty much always had it on the Veterans Day.
Been on the 11th.
Even when it's during the week, but, I mean, that's a decision that this council can make.
I, to be honest, I still like the 11th.
But if we have it during.
I mean, what harm is there on Tuesday?
I just think attendance would be the issue. I mean, if you're, if we're wanting an attendance, not everybody has Veterans Day off.
Military does, but school, you're right. I mean, I'm sure that that's the case.
I can barely hear you guys.
I said, Veterans Day is on a Tuesday.
We're talking about the, Veterans Day is on the 11th, which is a Tuesday this year, and the pros and cons of doing it in the middle of the week. That's what we're talking about.
More about attendance. I think the attendance would be a lot less on a Tuesday.
The only thing is, weekends, I think you're gonna get more military attendance, because on the, they get a four-day weekend, and a lot of them leave town. And that's the problem in finding a lot of assets in the parade that are military, because they, they don't want to do it.
Have we talked to them about their participation yet? Far as Herbert Field is concerned?
We haven't, we haven't even started that yet. We just had an introductory. We talked about sponsorship. We got a few sponsors now, things like that, and who's doing what. But we have not discussed, we have not got any feedback from, we haven't went out with any invitations for the parade yet.
Okay.
So.
So this will be the first time.
Go ahead, sir.
Would this be the first time in about, what, three years, since it moves every year calendar-wise, that it'll be on a weekdays?
In the middle of the week. We've had them Mondays, and we've had them. It's always been on the 11th, but this would pulls it into the middle of the week, so. Why don't we wait until next month? We have a meeting, well, this month, August, near the end. And we'll, we'll bring that up, and also we'll see what the response is. Because if we have all the organizations, they don't care. It's the holiday. Because, I mean, the memorial at the cemetery will be on a Tuesday. You know, I mean, it, there's other stuff that, that is gonna be on Memorial Day, so. It's something to look at.
Yeah, my recommendation is, we query the major stockholders and see what, what their direction is going, and then they'll give us more data to make our decision.
Yeah, that, that's kind of the plan. You know, we'll check with the military first and see what, what they would prefer. The guy that was supposed to do the military liaison, he wasn't there. So we're, I'll, I'll reach out for him, and he can, he can ask those questions. Because, you know, they run it, they put a lot of effort in it, they're, you know, that kind of stuff. Their grand marshal will probably be a military person. We may go like we did last year. There was some talk about the junior enlisted award-winning guy. That was, that was brought up again, and that definitely is, is a possible, you know, it's just a matter of scheduling him to be there for that. But, but yeah, that, that's a good breakup. I mean, well, I didn't, I'll be honest with you. Didn't even look at the calendar. It's always on the 11th, whenever that is, so that will be a.
Mayor?
Yeah.
My favorite subject with the veterans' parade, how's our float? I won't go and get wet this year? I mean, this is two years we've kicked this can down the road.
John, get up there and tell us.
Two years we haven't had the parade either.
No, we're not. We're not doing this.
We're investing in golf umbrellas with those locals.
Okay, we will.
We have a poncho for you this year, sir.
Oh, hey, that's a step up. Hey. What's a city of Mariestra on the front and back?
Absolutely.
Yes, yes.
Dylan will get those stickers put on it.
All right. Larry, I'm not gonna say you're, you know, it was a good comment. I appreciate it.
If Captain Ruiz is there, see if we can borrow the SWAT, I mean, the Special Weapons Department Bearcat riding that.
Now you're talking.
Absolutely. He said yes.
Yes, he said yes. Be clear with you, Larry. If it rains, you can be in my golf cart with me, and it's gonna roof your wiper, okay?
If Captain Pike's with me.
Yeah, you can hold a dog in the middle. That's not a problem. All right, well, that, okay. Anything else, Susan?
No.
Okay. Richard? No, okay. Nothing else? Okay, Mr. Carter, you're next. Do you have anything?
Yeah, one question. I think Councilman Coxwell brought it up in regards to the garden. I know we're going into the fall. Are we gonna have two plots next year, two locations? Since we did so much with the parks? That was one of the things we talked about.
The timeline for that. We talked about having the garden. Yeah, you're right, but when is all that gonna happen?
Well, it'd be nice to go forward a plan for next year, you know, if we, it may not be able to make the decision at this meeting, but, you know, something for us to think about.
Yeah, no, I mean.
Mayor and Council, so we haven't approved the Parks and Rec master plan yet. And then once that's done, the next step would be to prioritize which projects we want to do.
Yeah, so it's, it's out there, Larry. I think you're probably gonna have what you got now throughout the year, or a good portion of it, and then you got construction and priorities.
My last item is to ask the city manager and council if before January of next year, we could have one workshop where Captain Ruiz can come talk to us about our contract.
We, that's in work, right? We talked about that last time.
Yeah, so the plan right now is to bring the scope back to the council to our next meeting for you all to discuss. And then, so we'll go through that, and then staff will go ahead and move forward with that report, and that can certainly include getting feedback from the Sheriff's Department.
Okay. Thank you.
You good with that, Larry?
Yes, that's fine. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, along the library cooperative, Vicky's gonna retire. As of November 7th, they've already started advertising on the Okaloosa County website, trying to find her replacement, which, good luck with those. That's quite a pair of shoes. Is this background, she was the librarian at Holbert Field before she took that job. So she's only got like 40 years of experience, roughly. So, yeah, she's, it's gonna be tough. The other thing that they did, they asked all of us to negotiate or work with the House and the Senate on, from the federal government side of the House, of funding more museum and library funding. So they gave us an idea and a generated letter. I reached out to both the senators and our congressmen, requesting that, they consider that. I received a response back from all three, saying that they would look at it. Again, look at it, so it's, we're trying to, the other thing that's going on, the next meeting is, again, they've switched it to Mondays right now. So we need to change our calendar. It's gonna be Monday, September 22nd, is the next library cooperative meeting. And last but not least, someone, and I forget who it was, donated some really nice-looking binoculars and harness and everything for bird watching. So I volunteered, since the military, ex-Marines would know this, how to use binoculars and stuff like that. So I, I said, hey, I'd be willing to go around and help people learn how to use binoculars and watch for all the birds.
Can we get the library the binoculars?
Well, yeah.
Yeah. So. Check out or whatever.
Yeah, you can check them out. Each of the library I got, I think, I don't even remember, it's two or four sets. It's really nice, nice harness and the whole bit. So, but I'm not sure most people know how to use them correctly. But that's all I got.
Okay. That's from the nightmare. Thank you.
Check your mailbox, do your ethics training, do your cybersecurity training. And the next meeting is on August 27th at 2:30 in the library. It is the workshop that Jared had mentioned.
Mayor and Council, I just wanted to have Tyler Reed, our Community Development Director, give you a brief update on the comprehensive plan, since we did submit that to the state a couple of months ago for review.
All right, for the record, Tyler Reed, Community Development Director. So just to give you an update, on August 1st, we did receive comment from the Transmittal Review from Florida Department of Commerce. They did give us two simple objections and recommendations moving forward with the comprehensive plan rewrite. We will go ahead and do the adoption hearing for September. I've been in contact with ECRC about the, the letter that we received with the recommendations, and they are already working on getting those into our comp plan update. And like I said, they're just simple items that shouldn't really take too much effort on ECRC's, our consultants part, to get this in compliance. So we're working on that, and we should be good to go for the adoption hearing in September. Do you have any other, any questions on that?
Just for public record or recording, what are the two things they were pressing on?
So, just to give a, a brief overview for objection one. So they want us to align it more with the year 2050. I believe we did the year 2040. So we're gonna update the future land use map to show 2050. And then for objection two, they wanted us to provide standards for the density and intensity for the Town Center overlay, which is that new district where all of our commercial is centered around. And also for the public lands, land use as well. So those are the two main things. And, yeah, it's, it's nothing too wild or catastrophic, so.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Any questions for, go ahead.
I don't have any questions. I just forgot one thing. I apologize.
Thank you.
With, what reminded me was Dylan talking about the cybersecurity. Have we ever thought of doing a workshop? Ashley Bailey and I were talking the other evening at an event, and we have done workshops here for the Neighborhood Watch and such items. I think it really is important at this time to have workshops for cybersecurity scams and whatnot, especially with some of our residents who are vulnerable. So I don't know if we could set up something that is, you know, city, either the church or at the library, or something that she would be able to schedule and come in. But we have to get with her, because she gets, you know, worked pretty easy.
Does Ashley teach it?
Yes.
Oh, she does?
Yes.
Okay.
She's part of the, he, you know, is part of the.
Yeah, I know who she is. I just was curious if she's.
No, she goes all over.
To do that, because she's readily available.
Yes, so if we want to get her on the books, if we want to try to set something up. I think, you know, just, we've got some vulnerable residents that, you know, unfortunately, some have already fallen prey, and I think we can avoid that.
Okay, yeah, no, I, we could do something like that. What about, just curious, somebody asked me, our library doesn't do driver's ed anymore, driver's safety course or whatever. They used to do that, and I guess Fort Walton Beach is doing it now, under AARP. Who would know why they moved? I was just curious, because we used to do it here.
Did get a, I had asked Hunter, and.
Oh, that's right, it was, yeah.
Yeah, it was, there was a long explanation, but, yeah, basically, there wasn't a lot of interest.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine. Okay. Anybody? Oh, yes, ma'am. Go up there, state your name, address, give me your social security number. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
We can listen to Azila Drive. I just wanted to ask if there was an update about PAWS, the contract with PAWS? Because I got a kitten given to me. And so I called around, PAWS did invite that. I called them, I called them. And I don't know if they were sarcastic, but when they found out that I'm in Mariestra, they said, why don't you call the city hall? And I thought, that's not gonna do anything. But I did call, and the lady at the reception was a little baffled, and we both agreed that it was somewhat nonsense, so I'm just curious what the updates are.
That's gonna, next month, right, maybe? Discussion of PAWS? It's coming around.
I'm hopeful that we'll be able to bring something back next month. Nothing is set in stone.
Right.
The county does not, at least as of before this meeting, did not have a contract signed. So they are still working on it as well, but it sounds like things are at least moving.
Is that good? Nope?
So, so the question was whether or not Fort Walton received a renewal. And I don't know exactly when their termination date was, their end date was. I know that they were coming up on it. So I don't know, I don't have an update for Fort Walton. But at the end of the day, we were, we were sent a contract again to review, and it essentially was the same one that we had before. The one thing that we're trying to get from PAWS is a commitment that they won't give a better contract to somebody else. And so as soon as we get that back from them, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion.
Okay. Anything else from anybody?
Just real quick update. So we've been talking about, a couple of times about the mass communications software, and just want to let council know that we have gone through a couple demos now. And what we're trying to do at this point is just make sure that it will, that we select the system that will not only work on the front end for residents, but also work well for staff. Gov technology, I mean, it's. Gov technology, I mean, it's, it's not a fun space to play in. It's not nearly as good as the software that's set up for businesses. There's a number of reasons for that. I won't get into all those, but we're just making sure that when we do commit to something, that we can commit to it for more than, you know, a year, that it's something more long-term. But there are some great options available to handle the mass communications. So hopefully next month, we'll give you an update on that as well.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Anything else from anybody? Hey, we're adjourned.